Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the July 8th, 2024 meeting of the University City City Council being to order at approximately 6:36. Apologize for the slight delay. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Clay. Councilmember Teeman.
Present.
Councilmember McMahon.
Here.
Councilmember Hales.
Here.
Councilmember Fuller.
Here.
Councilmember Smotherson, Mayor Crowe.
Here. Before you have the agenda during the study session, no one made any requests for any changes. Are there any requests for changes at this time? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Motion made by Mr. Fuller is there second. Second by Mr. Hales. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. We have no proclamations. You have before you the June 24th, 2024 study session minutes on Olive redevelopment. Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Mr. McMahon, second by Mr. Hales. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. You have before you the June 24th, 2024 regular meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Mr. Teeman, second by Mr. McMahon. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. We have no appointments. We have no swearing in. This is our first section for citizen participation. For those of you who have walked in, there are sign up sheets over by the door. If you'd like to speak either on an agenda item or a non-agenda item, please fill out that form and put it in the basket in front of the city clerk. Each person, when they come to the microphone, please give your name and address, and your comments are limited to five minutes. The first person who wants to speak on a non-agenda item is Mr. Gerald Tears.
Gerald Tears, 7345 Chamberlain. There's been some concern expressed in various quarters with regard to the costs of the annex project as financed versus the budget. There may be some validity to these concerns. It seems removing a couple billion dollars from the budget likely result in some potential cuts in services. But there is a potential way to reduce that drain on the budget. That sales tax of a quarter percent that was intended to go towards the fire department that was in an election a year or two back might be more appropriately dedicated to help retire the debt for this new police station. If I'm not mistaken, U-City has not used the quarter percent sales tax which is allowed to impose. Presumably, that was what was to be used for the fire department proposal that did not pass. Therefore, it should be available for assistance regarding retiring the debt for the police department. It will not be enough to offset the entire payment, obviously, but it will be significant, and it will become larger as the total taxable sales in the city increase, as they should as economic development proceeds. There are many arguments against a sales tax, some better than others. I've mentioned a few of them in the past myself. However, this is a definite need which sales tax money can help satisfy. I might add that it seems appropriate as well. On, I suggest that the police department be a very good purpose for this currently unused taxing authority which the city has, and it's likely to be easier to pass than the fire department proposal was. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next request to speak on a non-agenda item is Ms. Patricia McQueen.
Hello, my name is Patricia McQueen. I live at 1132 George Street, St. Louis, Missouri, 63130, Third Ward. I know that there has been a vote already done on this particular item that I'm going to bring up, but I just wanted to get some clarification. This has to do with a study session that was on June the 24th on Olive redevelopment. Councilman McMahon had asked, Deputy City Manager was confident that the city had performed enough community engagement to move forward with an RFP, and within the answer, there was saying that yes, the visioning process, which I totally agree with, and I know that probably also includes the comprehensive plan. But then also included is the community engagement conducted by the Third Ward Revitalization Task Force. And as far as I can see in the preliminary plan, and I went through reading through all the minutes and I remembering my memory as well, we did not talk about the south-southern side of Olive where the seafood city is, because that's in Ward Two. We are Ward Three Task Force. So I wanted to have that in the minutes. Maybe it might come up as we continue to discuss the report. But as of yet, that had not been discussed. So that's all I wanted to bring up, even though you've already made the vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes our public comments for this time. I think everyone else who has signed up is on an agenda item matter. So to all of you, we have a number of folks who've signed up. Please, if I slip up, please don't hesitate to call me on the carpet and keep things moving. Next section of the agenda, which seldom has too many comments, is council comments in the middle. Are there any council comments at this time? Mr. Smotherson.
Thank you, Mayor Crowe. I did want to also comment about that statement that Ms. Pat brought up. And I did review that, and I just simply wanted to say that I'm hoping that there is no discussion with the Third Ward Revitalization Task Force in reference to a property that is in the Second Ward. So I'm hoping that there's nothing that we'll actually hear from the task force in that regard, and I'm hoping that that was a misstatement. But also, one of the other things that I wanted to mention is that based because of this, the vote that the council took in that last meeting and making the Seafood City lot a priority, I just wanted to make sure that we don't overlook the fact that there is, there was a preliminary plan for the blocks of 8201 through 8449 Olive Boulevard, which is the north side of Olive, which again is just east of the marketed Olive Development. And I wanted to actually turn this plan over to, this preliminary plan over to Ms. Reese and make sure that this is part of the document and record for this meeting so that the public can see that preliminary plan. Because again, that plan is, does follow the process that the Economic Development Task Force put together in 2020 in that summary. And so again, and I think it's important that we also follow and understand that we have to follow plans. And I can give you a good example of, you know, of, of what that means of not following a plan. Because in that Economic Development Task Force summary, it actually talked about the Pete Sure Save Lot that Crescent Plumbing now sits. And again, we have Crescent Plumbing that sits there, but if you look into that.
The pavement on the property poses a hazard for pedestrians wandering through the, the property. But this project provides much-needed space while improving the safety for all of its congregation members, especially the youngest ones and all who transit that property and walk that neighborhood.
Thank you very much. There are no further requests to speak on this particular item for the public hearing. So the public hearing on item number one, text 2401, is now closed. I will now open the public hearing at 6:49 on REZ 2401, an application by Raimi Burner on behalf of Agudis Israel of St. Louis for a zoning map amendment to rezone 558 Mapleview Drive and 564 Mapleview Drive from single-family residential to limited commercial. This hearing is opened at 6:50. I'd like the record to reflect that the same folks who made the written comments for the first public hearing have made the same comments for the second public hearing. Also, the record should reflect that I believe Ms. Holly's comments are for both public, for both public hearings. With no other requests to speak, I would declare that the public hearing on this matter is closed at 6:50. Apologies. Now move forward to the consent agenda. You have before you the consent agenda. Items one, two, three, four, five, and six. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided? Motion made by Mr. Hales. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Teeman. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Rose.
Honorable Mary, councilmembers, tonight we have State Representative and former mayor of University City, Joe Adams here, that will provide an update on the very robust state legislature session that we had this year. And so I would ask Representative Adams to, to come to the podium. And also, I want, now, don't beat me up for saying this, but this is also maybe one of his last official acts as Representative Adams will be retiring from the state legislature.
Somewhat, yeah. Joe Adams, 924 Wild Cherry Lane, University City. Lived there for who knows how long. Well over 30 years. Wow. The state legislature, this last session. He vetoes, and he vetoed about a billion dollars off. Most of that money that he vetoed were special items that members of the legislature tried to stick into the budget, which we have been successful in the past to do things for constituents and organizations and things like that. There's a problem. That's a problem. Reading between the lines and what the governor is saying, and this is why I don't think I'm really quite through yet. He is going to probably be asking for some emergency funding because the budget is light in two areas. Or at least one for sure, and two maybe, and I'll explain that shortly. The one where it's light is that big, huge, humongous education bill that the legislature passed that the Republican legislators are going around and saying is the greatest thing since sliced bread and everything else. It opens up schools in the Columbia area that are not public schools, but they will be publicly funded. We know what we're talking about, hopefully. The representatives of Columbia, except for the few Republicans that may be there, are very much upset about it. Opening up charter schools in the Columbia and Boone County, they are not happy in the least, and they are planning on suing like crazy. But that's another thing. But the parts of that bill was good, quite naturally. I voted no on it. Would have said heck no, but they don't like me saying that. But part of it's quite good. It does fund to the level that educate, not really, but to the level that the Republican legislature said that it should be funded, and it is funded. So we've been doing that, and it's funding something for the second year in a row that has been deficient, and that's public transportation for the kids going to the school systems throughout the state, and that is a good thing. But the problem is, the budget did not fully fund all the requests or the line items that are in that 727 bill. So we'll see. That's, we're gonna have to have a special session to deal with it. My best guess is that it's gonna happen at the veto session, which is in September. And that's when we're gonna clean up the mess, my best guess. Will the legislature override the governor's veto? They haven't in my history been down. They're the Republican governors veto, so I tend to doubt it, but who knows? He cut out a billion dollars, remember? That's a lot of money for some of them. I've tried to get some money in there for U-City and have not been successful, so hopefully my successor will be more successful in getting money stuck in the budget. I tried to get the sidewalks built on North and South Road, and I thought I had it because all of a sudden they had a potload of money they had to quickly spend, and I was pushing it, but it didn't quite work. Now, here are, here's where the other problem for the budget is. In about, what is it, four weeks now we're having election, or is it less than four weeks? I forget now. In the August election, there are two items that are on the August election. These are joint resolutions. One of them was voted on before, and the courts basically said you don't win on this one. You gotta do it right. They didn't spell out what was happening. That one, if anybody asks me, I'm telling people to vote no on that. It's four. It's housed, it is constitutional amendment four. It deals with really the city of Kansas City, doesn't deal with anybody else, city of Kansas City. It's requiring the city of Kansas City to spend X amount of dollars for their police department. Friends and neighbors, that violates a thing that I dearly loved, not really, but I loved it for its provision, a thing called the Hancock Amendment. I even debated that guy Hancock, who is now deceased. He was a congressman at one time from Missouri. It requires that if the state requires a municipality to spend money, the state's got to pay for it. Will they put a curve ball in this legislation? I love that, where for a couple of years, even though they may mandate Kansas City spend X dollars, it doesn't affect them, the Hancock. Friends and neighbors, I'm gonna tell you that if that is approved, they're gonna eventually do all cities across the state on certain things. Who knows? Don't give them that chance. Kansas City is required to spend 20% of their budget for their police department. They spent over 20% of their budget on the police department. They wanted to be able to negotiate what that extra is spent on, and they said, no, you can't do that. Now, the thing about the state and Kansas City Police Department, the state runs Kansas City Police Department, technically. They appoint four of the five police commissioners that run the Kansas City Police Department. They're the only police department in the state that operates that way. City of St. Louis used to, and they were trying to do that again. That is a mess. As a former Kansas Cityan, I will tell you one little historical fact that I think is a disaster for the state-run Kansas City Police Department. In 1968, there was an event that happened in a place called Memphis. It was the assassination of Martin Luther King. Some of you, well, a couple of you are old enough to remember. There were riots in 1968, and Kansas City had a riot, but it almost didn't. The mayor of Kansas City, Missouri, who was elected nonpartisan, but he was basically a Republican, Ilas Davis, wanted to go out and march with the people who were protesting the assassination of Martin Luther King. The police, head of the police commission, the governor's appointee, had the mayor corralled and thrown in a police car when he was trying to go march with his citizens. I've told that story on the floor of the legislature when they were trying to mess up cities again, dealing with Kansas City and St. Louis and the control of the police department. That's why I'm very much opposed to it. Okay? It will be on this. It was voted on before. Kansas City people voted down. Everybody across the state, oh, yeah, that sounds good. Okay. The other item that may cause us to have a budget problem is amendment item number one. It's one of those you flip a coin on. It's going to require you all, well, most of you all, to exempt, probably, childcare facilities from property tax and personal property tax, so they can recoup that money to try to keep the fees lower because we have a childcare problem in this state of Missouri. But nowhere in the, in the bill that will be voted, does it mandate it that they lower the cost. So there you go. It's a great idea. Will it, will it work? I'm not sure. But it's something to think about. That's it. That's basically it. Everything else is yuck. Now, in November, in November, there may be, well, there are at least two items that will be constitutional amendments, and there may be a total of five. Maybe. The two will happen. They, they are passed by the legislature. Actually, it's passed by the Senate. They never took any of ours from the House. Good deal. I fought most of the ones in my committee that I was on. I was a ranking member, which was elections. We had tons of House joint resolutions where they were trying to deny you, your citizens of the state of Missouri, definitely citizens of University City, the right to petition their government for changes and everything else, to deny you the right to vote on items. They're very bad. There are three other, there was House, I mean, House Joint Resolution 74, which there are court fees, which will be on the November ballot, which will require John Mulligan there to assess a court fee for people, and the money will go to sheriffs throughout the state to help their pensions and also, I think, prosecutors' pensions. That's SJR 71. I don't know the number of it on the ballot in November. And the other is HJR 78. They're aiming at the city of St. Louis again. St. Louis is the only city that has, in the state of Missouri, that has a way of voting for their municipal leaders. They call it the anti-ranked choice voting. City of St. Louis is sort of modification of that. They really want to do it. And so what they're gonna do is tell every city throughout the state of Missouri, you can't experiment in how your citizens vote for their leadership. They say no, but they do exempt city of St. Louis from that. Everybody else will be prohibited. The three items that may still be on the ballot, it's up to the Secretary of State to certify them, and he's taking his time to the last minute. One is quite naturally the abortion. The other one is dealing with The other one is dealing with, well, pay minimum wage. And the third one, let's see if I can remember what that third one is. And honestly, I accidentally forgot what the third one is. I'll think of it after I leave here. But those are the three. There are three. And that's about it on that. But other than that, hey, you got any questions about? It was, it really was a weird session. We had people in the Senate, for the most part, all running for something. And they're all campaigning like crazy now in the primary. Most of them could, thankfully will lose. Hopefully only a few good people will win, but I don't know. Oh, folks. Folks, it was a bad session. It really was. I can't say how bad it was. It was gosh awful bad. And it was exhausting because of its bad, because we were always fighting. And luckily our Senate people fought because they've got filibuster and they killed a really
six to 2010. So I think he probably, his years of service may equal more than many of us put together to his community. So I think both to Joe and to his lovely wife Nancy, I'd most like to say thank you for your years of commitment and service to our community, both as a member of the council, as mayor and as our state rep.
Well, thank you very much. And as a state rep, I really try to protect cities, University City in particular, but all cities in the state of Missouri, because state legislature has not a clue, except for a few of them, what you guys do. You are the closest to the people. I remember when I was a council member and I always remember when I was mayor, people would see me at the store and talk to me about problems and everything else. You people do now, state rep, but I mean, you are close to the people. And they'll, they'll talk about how they will want to give everybody the rights and everything else, but they don't want cities to have rights. Trust me. And they don't want schools at districts either. So, ah, they're, they're fun. They're really fun. Anyway, I enjoyed my work here and I've enjoyed my work down there too. I was just wish I could have gotten more done for everybody. But anyway, y'all take care.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. We will now move on to unfinished business. We have bill number 9544. Madam Clerk, may we have the second reading?
Bill 9544, an ordinance amending section 400.070 of the municipal code of the city of University City, Missouri, relating to the official zoning map by amending said map so as to change the classification of property at 558 Maple View Drive and 564 Maple View, Maple View Drive from single-family residential district SR to limited commercial district LC.
May we have the third reading?
Bill 9544, an ordinance amending section 400.070 of the municipal code of the city of University City, Missouri, relating to the official zoning map by amending said map so as to change the classification of property at 558 Maple View Drive and 564 Maple View Drive from single-family residential district SR to limited commercial district LC.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Mr. Hale, seconded by Mr. Teeman. I do, I believe we have one request to speak on this prior to council comments. I believe, and I apologize, I'm not sure because I can't read the last name, but it is Bill Remus, maybe? If you'll hit the button on the bottom, give your name and address.
Yeah, Bill Remus, 8182 Maryland. I'm an attorney for Agudas Israel. Actually meant to put down for the CUP. I wrote the wrong number by mistake, so I just hold for that, if that's okay.
I'm sorry?
I actually meant to write down for the CUP, speak on behalf of Agudas, answer questions.
Do you want to speak now?
No, no. If I could just reserve for that instead by mistake.
That's fine. We'll do it on CUP.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, I know we have another request to speak. Put in the till. Hearing no one requesting to speak on bill number 9544, we will in just a minute, once we move through everything, have the, have any, I apologize, any discussion or questions on bill number 9544 from members of council? Hearing them, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember McMahon.
Aye.
Councilmember Hales.
Aye.
Councilmember Fuller.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Smothersen. Councilmember Teeman.
Aye.
Mayor Crowe.
Aye, the bill is passed. We'll now go to bill number 9545. Madam Clerk, may we have the second reading?
Bill 9545, an ordinance amending zoning code section 400.7, 400.470 of the University City Municipal Code relating to other development standards in the limited commercial zoning district LC by deleting subsection A thereof, which provides that a principal building shall not exceed 12,000 square feet in gross floor area.
May we have the third reading?
Bill 9545, an ordinance amending zoning code section 400.470 of the University City Municipal Code relating to other development standards in the limited commercial zoning district LC by deleting subsection A thereof, which provides that a principal building shall not exceed 12,000 square feet in gross floor area.
Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Mr. Hales. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. McMahon. Is there a discussion? Hearing them, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Hales.
Aye.
Councilmember Fuller.
Aye.
Councilmember Smothersen. Councilmember Clay. Councilmember Teeman.
Aye.
Councilmember McMahon.
Aye.
Mayor Crowe.
Aye, the bill has passed. We now have bill number 9546. May we have the second reading?
Bill 9546, an ordinance fixing the compensation to be paid to city officials and employees as enumerated herein from and after July 1st, 2024 and repealing ordinance number 7344.
We have the third reading.
Bill 9546, an ordinance fixing the compensation to be paid to city officials and employees as enumerated herein from and after July 1st, 2024 and repealing ordinance number 7344.
Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Mr. Teeman, seconded by Mr. McMahon. Is there a discussion? Hearing them, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fuller.
Aye.
Councilmember Smothersen. Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Teeman.
Aye.
Councilmember McMahon.
Aye.
Councilmember Hales.
Aye.
Mayor Crowe.
Aye, the bill has passed. We'll now move forward with the second portion of the city manager's report. Mr. Rose?
I'm the mayor and councilmembers. This next item, item number two, asks that you consider a conditional use permit, CUP-24-02, a conditional use permit application to allow the expansion of the Agudas Israel synagogue at 8200 through 8206 Delmar Boulevard and 558 564 568 Maple View Drive. We have
here, city council members. The CUP 24-02 allows for the expansion of the Agudas Israel at the corner of Old Bond Home and Delmar. It's the revised, the new, the new building would be about 36,000 square feet. Just saw you 36,000 square feet. So it's a much needed addition. It was first discussed at the May 22 plan commission meeting and it was approved then. And then it was also there, the site plan was amended just a little bit on June 26. It was at the June 26 meeting that the next item I wanted to be sure to mention to you. On page nine of the staff report are the eight recommendations, two of which are crossed out. So we're down to six because the, the other two were accommodated in the revised site plan. So in what is number eight on there will be number six in the final permit. The, the cut through, by the way, the cut through is, is, and I put on your desk between the meetings, the site plan showing where the cut through is. The cut through is located currently where the red box is. And with the revised plan, it will be just a little bit further southwest where the blue box is. The cut through is essentially for the neighborhood, for Agudas Israel and for the neighborhood behind there to access Delmar Boulevard. It's also ADA accessible. So it's used as a shortcut, as it were, to Delmar Boulevard. That provision to have, to, to keep that cut through was added in at the June 26 meeting. And the, the synagogue had no problem doing that. But I, I took the liberty, and I hope you don't mind, of, I spoke with Mr. Remus, the attorney for the synagogue midweek, last week. And he wanted to add in the language that the synagogue may take, it says shall in here, says may, add it to may, take reasonable security measures, measures with respect to the cut through, including closing it off if necessary to protect the synagogue and its members. And at our meeting last week, Mr. Rose suggested that we add in language with the approval of the chief of police. So I'd be happy to read that lesson. It's like kind of butchered it, speaking through it there. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions regarding the, the cut through or any of the conditions of the CUP. And Mr. Remus is available for comment, as is Brian Glazer of the synagogue.
Are there any questions of Dr. Wagner? Hearing none, I know that we have two people who would like to speak on this. Is there a motion to approve? Motion to approve CUP by Mr. Hales. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. McMahon. Before council council, we have two folks who would like to speak and then we'll have council speak. Dr. Wagner, I don't think, evidently we don't have questions for you. So wonderful. Beg your pardon? Oh, okay. Mr. Hales?
So we have two plan commissioners here?
We do.
All right. Were they apprised of the proposed shift in the location?
They, they knew that the, the, well, the, they knew at the original May 22 meeting that with the, with the new site plan, it would shift. But, but on, at, at the May 22 meeting, the cut through wasn't made as a condition of the permit at the time.
Okay.
So it was only at the June meeting where that was put in.
Anyone else? Hearing nothing from my colleagues, we have two requests to speak. The first is Brian Glazer. I'm not.
Brian Glazer, 8140 Tulane Avenue. I just wanted to be here, present and turn any questions if any of the councilmen have.
I'm thinking we're good. And I believe Ms. Moore, you had asked to speak on the public hearing. The public hearings have been open and closed. Would you like to speak as to say, we're all talking about the same thing now? The, the two ordinances are passed. Would you like to speak on the CUP that we're now talking about, which does have a relationship to the, the bills that you've spoken, you requested to speak on?
Quickly, your honor, and I apologize for being late. Kind of runs in my genes. I'm sorry.
And your name and address, please.
My name is Sandra Moore and I live at 520 Westview Drive. And many of the parishioners, members of the synagogue are my neighbors. And so my comments are very brief and to the point. But I think that I know from moving around the neighborhood that I, I am speaking on behalf of many who believe that these amendments to the zoning and the support of the expansion of this building is supported in this neighborhood. But I will personally say that we think that this is a very good addition to the neighborhood. This, this synagogue has been there for many, many years, decades, and has strengthened the very fiber of the neighborhood by the activities and the residents and their behavior and their regard and love for the community. And as many years as an urban planner, I know that these kinds of institutions do strengthen the fiber and the demonstration of this community is that that has been the case. So I speak completely in support of this, of these changes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes our request to speak. Are there any other comments or questions from members of council on item CUP 2402? I beg your pardon? Oh, you want to speak? Okay, okay. I apologize, please. I'm slipping in my old age.
No, you're slipping too. I put my, my number down wrong. Just again, for the record, my name is Bill Remus. Excuse me, I'm an attorney. My address is 8182 Maryland Avenue with the firm of Cape Soco. And I represent Agudas Israel. We really certainly appreciate everyone's consideration tonight. There is one very small thing that I would like to bring up for, for you guys to consider. The change that was made to this last condition with respect to the cut through. Some language has been suggested that to secure the cut through or close it down, we, the synagogue is required to obtain the approval of the police chief. We're wondering if that's something that really, we're not sure exactly what's driving that. Obviously, Agudas is, is fine with the cut through. It's there now. They're happy to use it. Their, their residents use it, the members of the synagogue use it. But you know, be that as it may, if security issues are out there that require this to be shut down for the safety of the synagogue, they certainly need the ability to do that. And they don't want to be in a position where they have to go through some process. So I'm wondering, you know, I'm happy to answer questions about that or delve into that a little more deeply, but that would be the one condition or piece of condition that we would like to see some help with. I certainly appreciate your consideration.
Mr. Rose?
I'm the mayor and councilmembers. The reason for the suggestion was simply because if it is for security reasons, then police should be involved with providing security for the, for the synagogue. And so there was a concern that without that additional level of that, not saying that you would ever do this, but effectively you could close it down permanently. And there would be no recourse for that. And so the intention was not just the police chief, but the police in general would need to provide approval. So there would be the chief or whoever he designates. But that was the rationale behind it.
Understood. Thank you so much. I mean, would there be some way to set that up? And the, the intention would not be to shut it down permanently for no reason, but only if security, only for so long as security measures required it to be so. So I'm wondering if there's some way to set the condition up so that it's, it's got some parameters to it so that, obviously, we don't intend to shut it down permanently or for no reason. But if security, security conditions warranted, they, they'll have some comfort that they can get that done as needed.
I think even if the, if it is shut down, as long as police are made aware of it and then they can have that discussion with you if they believe that it, if, if there are questions as to why it was shut.
That's fine. Yeah.
So perhaps changing that to notification to the police department of the closure of the cut through.
Certainly.
Is that acceptable?
Oh, of course, yes. That would be wonderful. Thank you so much.
Okay, so I'm not still understanding. Did you, we're leaving the CUP as, as presented to us by Dr. Wagner or someone making a suggestion of a motion to change or whatever?
The modification would be that Agudas Israel would have the authority to close the cut through, subject to notification of the police department of the closure.
Yes.
I mean, and that's acceptable to them.
And that's a motion that's, I, you know, I guess my question to whoever here, wasn't this, wasn't this taken care of before everybody got here tonight? Was there not agreement reached on this before the CUP came before the body tonight?
This, this, before the meeting tonight was the first, was really made aware of the change. And any, that I know it would have been floating around out there. We had discussed it, Dr. Wagner and I, but We had discussed it, Dr. Wagner and I, but, um, I had not seen it in the text before tonight.
I would, I would ask Dr. Wagner, uh, to, uh, step to the podium. We had this discussion back on last Wednesday.
Yes, we, uh, we discussed it last Wednesday about adding the, the police department, uh, notification in. So, uh, so the, so the last sentence, if I, if I could read.
That's where, that's where our confusion is. This is where we're stuck. You're on.
Thanks. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, 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 I it, it's, it's a difficult decision because I understand from the perspective of the synagogue and the, in today's world, um, and ever-changing and quickly changing, um, world issues that can create significant threat to a synagogue. And I don't want to belittle that in any way. I want, I don't want to minimize it in any way. Um, that's a very important issue. So I believe them having, the synagogue having the ability to control access is important and should be, um, honored. Um, I would, if, as Jeff, Mr. Hales has suggested, does this involve a fence? Is there a fence already planned back there or is this? So, because I don't know if the neighborhood has discussed that or the plan, what's it going to look like? How's, those are important issues that then butt up against
Yeah.
another group. And that's, that's where I'm kind of bobbling on this. I certainly understand saying, uh, are we going to make this approval by, by the, 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 the chief of police? That creates another level of being able to close the gate. Um, do they need that when the, 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 the threat starts on a, you know, a Friday morning and they're having services? You know, I mean, that, I, I get that, but I would like the, you know, possibly the neighbors to weigh in on aesthetics or how they feel. I believe they would probably fall on the side of protecting those folks as much as they can. Um, but that's also a concern that I have. So I'm kind of up in the air on how to amend this at the last minute, as the mayor had mentioned. So that, that's where I sit. I would, if there could be a little bit more discussion, um,
Correct. But right now, we have no, the, the packet itself says that they simply have the right, they've moved the right of way south and nothing more. Am I correct?
Correct.
Did anyone got a pathway forward for us? Or are we just going with what you, you made a motion, I believe, just based on what is in the packet? If I'm correct. And then you got it, Johnny, you're.
Ma, the, the packet has the, the second sentence of what Dr. Wagner read, that, that being the synagogue shall take reasonable security measures with respect to the cut through, including closing it off if necessary to protect the synagogue and its members. So that, that's in the packet.
Correct.
And that is a condition.
Correct.
They'll bolt those sentences.
Correct.
And so
Correct.
the question is, is there going to be an amendment
Correct.
of that?
And as I am understanding it, Mr. Rose has suggested that the police chief be involved. And now you, are you still suggesting that? I think that that's kind of where we are in this process.
Mayor, I just simply made a recommendation that they be informed at this point. I think that that's acceptable to the, uh, uh, to the synagogue as well.
So just in, that the police chief will be informed?
That's correct.
Mr. Hales and Mr. McMahon, would you accept a friendly amendment to this CUP?
I would prefer the original language as it stands right now. If we approve the original proposed, the proposed language, the amendment that Dr. Wagner said, can, can this be further talked about? And if there's some other recommendation, can it be amended after the fact?
Absolutely. Well, it would have to come back to be amended.
Yeah, I, I was gonna say, an amendment of the conditional use permit, other than, uh, a minor change to the site plan, would require going through the CUP process again.
Peggy gets it again. Um, so we have not, we do not have a friendly amendment yet. Uh, the original language is as it stands so far. Is there any member of council who would like to make any amendment to the language, uh, that has been provided to us in our packet?
I was, I, I was just gonna say, I think even if we use just the original language, it doesn't include notification or approval. If there was such a threat, I would think those folks would be calling Chief Hampton and saying, there's a problem and we need your help. We need an extra patrol. We need an extra officer. So I really don't think it becomes an issue if it got to the level they had that level of concern. Um, so I'm, I'm more than happy to stick with the pack.
Thank you very much. I hear no one is willing to make, wanting to make an most, a, uh, an amendment to CUP twenty four oh two. Hearing none. Is any further discussion? We have a motion and a second before us. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. We'll now move forward with new business. We have bill number ninety five forty eight. May we have the first reading?
Bill nine five four eight, an ordinance amending section four hundred point zero seven zero of the municipal code of the city of University City, Missouri, relating to the official zoning map by amending said map so as to change the classification of property known as lot four of marketed olive plat six from planned development commercial district PD dash C to planned development commercial district PD dash C and repealing ordinance number seven two two two.
And I apologize, Ms. Reese. I did not ask for anyone to, uh, introduce that bill. Mr. Smothers has graciously, uh, agreed to correct my error. Now we'll go to bill number ninety five forty nine. Who would like to introduce? Mr. Hales, may I have the first reading?
Bill nine five four nine, an ordinance amending zoning code section four hundred point two seven three zero of the University City Municipal Code relating to standards for motor vehicle orientated businesses by making the standards inapplicable to developments along Olive Boulevard between Interstate I one seventy and McKnight Road or Woodson Dimensional North Road and amending section four hundred point seven eight zero of said code relating to density and regulations and performance standards in planned development districts PD by correcting the references in subsections A four and A five to sections four hundred point two seven three zero and four hundred point two seven one zero of, of said code respectively.
Thank you very much. We, who would like to introduce bill number ninety five fifty? Mr. Fuller, Madam Clerk, will we have the first reading?
Bill nine five five zero, an ordinance approving a final development plan for lot four of the marketed olive development plat six and repealing ordinance number seven two two five.
Thank you. We now have bill number ninety five fifty one. Who would like to introduce? Mr. Clay. Madam Clerk, would you please read the first reading of bill number ninety five fifty one?
Bill nine five five one, an ordinance authorizing the city of University City to enter into and execute a contract with St. Louis County, Missouri for vector control services and authorizing and directing the city manager of University City to enter into, on behalf of said city, a contract with St. Louis County, Missouri for vector control services.
Thank you very much. We have bill number ninety five fifty two that is now coming up prior to being introduced. Uh, Mr. Mulligan needs to make one comment.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Um, the, uh, version of this bill in the packet has, uh, has been amended. Um, a minor amendment was made, uh, to exhibit A on page two, uh, section one oh one. A, the definition of Sid portion of district sales tax revenue. The, the, in the, um, fifth line, the word applicable, um, uh, it has been deleted and, in place of that developer or A, uh, and then followed by sub-developer. And this, this minor change was made so that the language would be consistent throughout the documents in this bill.
Thank you very much. Who would like to introduce bill number ninety five fifty two? As changed by, by, by Mr. Mulligan, I believe, Mr. McMahon. Uh, Madam Clerk, could you please, uh, have the first reading of bill number ninety five fifty two?
Bill nine five five two, an ordinance approving various documents and actions in connection with the furthering, the future development of redevelopment project area one of the Olive Boulevard Commercial Quarter Redevelopment Area and the market at, markets at Olive Community Improvement District.
Thank you very much. We'll now move forward with council reports and business. Any reports from members of council? Uh, hearing none. We have no, I don't believe we have anyone else who has signed up for any citizen comments. Are there any final council comments, uh, this evening? Mr. Smothers?
Thank you, Mayor Crowe. Um, I just wanted to continue with my, uh, previous statement and, and actually address this to Mr. Rose and, and, and I, I wanted to make this public because, simply because the, the two parts that I'm actually talking.
To actually state. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, Mayor Proton Smothers, and I've asked, uh, um, the interim director to come for it. He may have some information on it that we could resolve it tonight. If not, then we'll need to do some research uh, and provide an answer to, uh, you and the council, uh, at a later date. Mr. Girdler?
Thank you, Mr. Rose, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for the questions. Um, we can certainly address Metcalf Field uh, with, without hesitation, I believe. I don't, I'm not, I don't understand why they've been left up for this duration, but I will, I will address that tomorrow with my deputy director. And as far as the, uh, fencing behind Jack Buck softball field now, um, that was left in place, was left in. It, it, as a kind of containment area or if someone wanted to run a dog or something, but we will, uh, we will certainly check and I will determine. We'll, we'll let you know for sure what we want to do with that.
Well, I, I really, you know, I'm not sure this is necessarily part of council comments, but I would think that you're going to adjust the, you may, the, the, it shouldn't be just one member of council. It should be maybe the park commissioner, someone taking a look at this to make sure that they, if there's a purpose for the fence, there is, there is, or if there's not, there's not. But it's one of those things that, you know, it's probably a broader discussion, at least with somebody other than just the, just us this evening, but thank you. Anyone else? Uh, uh, Mr. McMahon?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to, I, a couple of things I noticed in the packet, or one of them in the packet, was the amount of, uh, the facade improvements that we've received and seen over the recent time here. In years past, I don't remember seeing that many applications for the facade improvements, which I think is, hopefully it's, you know, the ability for staff to get the word out so people are accessing it. Um, I think that's a good thing. So I'm glad to see that those are going. Um, and then I, I just wanted to point out that the, the comment regarding the, uh, the sales tax regarding Prop F, I believe. the sales tax regarding Prop F, I believe the legislature gave us a unique opportunity because that was a legislative change which allowed fire protection districts. And Mr. Mulligan can correct me if I'm wrong, but it was related to fire protection districts that could institute that sales tax. And it was in twenty, I think, twenty twenty one. And we tried to take an opportunity to do that. It wasn't something that was allowed for police. So you just can't flip flop and now say use it for police. It was for fire protection districts. And that was part of what some of the folks that were opposed to that proposal said, well, you can't use fire money to put in the pensions because it'll help the police. So to come back and say suddenly, well, just flip flop it now call it police. It it just didn't work that way because this was done because of a unique opportunity that was presented and many municipalities throughout the state took advantage of it, passed it, unfortunately, ours didn't pass. But I just wanted to make sure that that was accurate. And if I'm wrong on that, someone will correct me, but I believe that's how it came up.
You're correct, Councilmember McMahon. Anyone else? A couple of things I would like to say. First off, Representative Adams did say that the third amendment that he couldn't remember was online gaming. So that is the other item that he had forgotten. And then just on behalf of the city, I would like to thank in particular Ms. Reese and then Brooke and her staff. We were, we had the pleasure of hosting the National League of Cities here for a tour of our beautiful City Hall and City Hall Chamber, council chambers this afternoon. And Ms. Reese truly went beyond the call of duty to have a variety of foods that were made in University City or St. Louis, rep things that were by E.G. Lewis and his company, gift bags for people. Really, it was a wonderful affair. And I believe Mr. Fuller, Mr. Hales were able to join me today as well as city manager, but to Ms. Reese, thank you very much for going that extra step to make our city look good for the National League of Cities. We appreciate that. And with that, I would welcome a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Mr. Hale, seconded by Mr. McMahon. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye, opposed. The ayes have it. Thank you very much for joining us this evening.